Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 P.M. on June 17th. This is a special city council meeting. Let's bring to order, and now let's say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, and the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Frank.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Renee. Now, we have one item, or actually two. The first is for approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
May I, Kim Shaw Elliott? Do I have a second? By Frank Bankard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda is approved. Now, we're on item two. This is for consideration of increasing quantities of B-23-01, street and drainage improvement from Ninth Street to Morgan Drive to maintain a consistent flow line in valley curve on certain nearly level streets and replace curb on 22nd Street. Kyle, you go to the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I decided an agenda, or this item on the agenda is to cover the current stormwater project that we are, we started at Morgan Drive and we moved from 25th to 23rd, and then now we're down here working on Cedar Spruce and Palm. But this item will discuss specifically 23rd Street where we're seeing, you know, the curb is not, it's atypical, it's not your standard valley curb, and there's some factors involved on that street that our engineer Larry Flutie is going to explain and, you know, what his recommendation is for that street. So the reason that it says to discuss increasing quantities, a lot of these items are already on the bid. It's a matter of increasing the quantity to achieve the level, the flow line that we want to see in the curb as well as the typical V shape and the fall for the larger terrain. It also discusses 22nd Street. 22nd Street was, the curb on Ninth Street was left out of the original bid, but the curb is in, in rough shape. And after going out there and looking at it, I asked Larry Flutie to give us a cost estimate of what, what cost would occur to replace that curb. It's a little different because the street was already resurfaced in 2022, so it's, it's going to involve somewhat of a change order because the valley curb will need to be carefully cut and removed and reported back into place. So I'm going to pass it to city contract engineer Larry Flutie, and he's going to give us a presentation of where we're at thus far in the project.
Hello, Mr. Flutie.
Good evening. Larry Flutie, general engineer. I'll begin. Where we are at, we're contractors made it from 23rd, 24th up in the north end of the project and is working, working south there and of course jumping down to Cedar and the streets along here.
Mr. Flutie, can I talk to you in the full of the microphone a little closer to your ear?
Okay. There we go. How's that? Sorry. No, I can't hear you. The, anyway, the, the work for the project is taking up the existing curb and milling the existing pavement one inch, the existing one inch, and then replacing it with an inch and a half of asphalt and replacing the curb. And the curb, that the direction that, that we give to the contractors, the curb is to be constructed with a continuous flow. So that when the, when the slade is done, they'll have a continuous flow, no puddling or any, any low spots or things like that. The transitions into the driveways, you know, to be smooth. And then at the ends, at Gulf and Bay Shore, they have to, you know, make sure we can match the existing pavement. The difficulties that sometimes we have with that need, meaning the existing grade at Gulf and down at Bay Shore and the road being so flat, the difficulty is getting enough rock to lay in the curb, lay in the asphalt. I think, up in the screen, I'll get to the next. As you can see here, some of the issues that we have, particularly on the photo on the right side, that's 23rd down at the, at 23rd and Gulf where the existing walk ramp meets the road. So it's, it's an area that's palmy in itself, and that's what we're having to tie in. Another issue coming up is on 19th, that's the photo on the left, and replacing the existing ribbon curb and trying to get in a curving gutter, you know, that. So that's, that's going to take something. You can also see that the existing driveways are at the gutter, better elevation. So we're going to have to really consider what we can do there to make this project work. Go ahead and move on to 22nd. 22nd Street, we're salt cutting the curb and leaving, leaving along the pavement that's just put on there. And we'll do that, and this, this represents the limits of the work. And so with that, we'll, we've created our quantities for that. And based upon our estimate for, for the work on 22nd, we estimated that, you know, with the, the cutting, the salt cutting, the valley curb replacement, restoration of some of the concrete areas, restoration of driveways, and then any miscellaneous work that's for any sprinkler or, or utilities, we estimate that project to be around $250, $593. Any questions so far on that?
Any questions, council?
Yeah, on the, I did.
Sure.
On the 19th Street, we said there's currently the ribbon.
Yeah.
Gutters in there. I really feel like, actually, everybody would agree, our real objective there is just to make sure whatever we have there is in fact moving the water to where we want it to be moved.
Yeah.
To get into the drainage system. So, I live on 20th, so I drive by there all the time. I know we had a pretty decent rain last night, so I went by there this morning, and there's, there's zero standing water on those quote ribbon gutters.
Okay.
So to me, from my perspective, I don't care if they're a valley gutter or a vertical gutter or a ribbon gutter, the water's moving to a drain somewhere, which is really our ultimate goal.
Right.
So I don't know if we necessarily, and I defer to you, have to force, you know, Miami gutter, the valley gutter on that street if in fact, I mean, what would be the benefit of trying to transition from that ribbon gutter to a valley gutter? As long as the water currently is moving the way it's supposed to.
Well, that's the big plus right there, that the water is moving and it's getting off there.
Right.
So that's, that grates makes it a little bit easier. If we had puddling.
Right.
Or blowers, it'd be a little bit more difficult. My initial thoughts of, of that area is, you know, where we have that flat ribbon curb, if we put in a V, like a one inch deep, that looked like the ribbon curb, the edge, edges would match the existing elevation curve. So the, say it's a one inch deep V, and with the water already flowing, that should get to, should get it to the inlet. So that's, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
Okay.
So you're increasing the volume?
Yes. Now, helps direct the flow down there, yeah, and increase the volume, or volume, the faster come off the curb.
And just a point of information, again, I mentioned that I'm on 20th Street, you know. For whatever reason, the water flows two directions and it flows well. So from the most, look at the midpoint of the road with respect to east to west, the right at the midpoint, for the most part, the water flows, the eastern part of the road, the water flows towards the intercostal. From the middle of the road towards Gulf Boulevard, it flows to Gulf Boulevard. So it's going in the county's drain, which is fine.
Yeah.
But it moves, it goes. I just want to make sure that the contractor understands it because I'd hate for them to attempt to make it all flow in one direction, which could be more of a challenge, as long as right now, the water's flowing basically from the center position of that road in two different directions, and it works fine.
That's on 20th and there's about halfway.
Right, about halfway, right. And you can tell, I can always tell by the irrigation systems in the morning. So like my neighbor, who lives pretty much in the middle, when his irrigation system runs, all the water runs towards Gulf Boulevard.
Okay.
The next house over, when their irrigation system runs, it runs towards St. the Intercostal.
Okay.
Then it can't close good, so it's working.
Okay. I'll just start off, give the contractor and make sure we put in something that continues that.
So in this case, in the, about halfway down the street.
Yeah.
It would flow downhill without a closure.
And I can't remember if the survey picked that up and if they have.
Oh, so.
And so, yeah, certainly those, you know, we'll make sure it flows the way that Ratty wants it to go.
Okay. So on the, on the 22nd Street, I had a little bit of a conversation with Kyle today. So the median area in the middle, so what was, what was the cost to put in new curbing just around that area? Let me see.
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand, somewhere around that. That's the vertical curb?
Okay, that's going to be vertical, correct, in the median, right. So what, so if it was your money, what do you think, what's the value in changing that out, what we have there? It's certainly not going to affect anything with regards to drainage, it's just more aesthetics than anything.
Depends on the condition of the vertical curb. Now, once you start milling it there and looking, if it's really got a lot of fractures and cracks in it, then I'll replace it. If it looks good and solid, then that's, you may need to make a decision whether or not to place it or just leave it there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes?
Just so I understand what the options are, am I correct in understanding that we have about a $250,000 increase to remove the just laid curves and replace them with V curves? And are you saying that an alternative is to essentially cut out a proportion of that curb to make it more like a V? Is that understanding correct?
For 22nd Street, it's, since the pavement's there, and it was, and it's fairly new and recent, the goal is to, how do you separate the, the older curb, the curving gutter, and the vertical curb, which is in the median? And a clean way of separating that and getting that out is to salt cut between the curb and the pavement. And then that allows that curb to be removed and that new curb placed and formed in place. So that's, that's what we're proposing on 22nd.
And 22nd Street is not new, none of the curbs is new, I think, unnecessary. This is, this was overlooked in budgeted work whenever that street was paved.
But 23rd Street isn't.
Correct.
And that, and that wasn't done by machine, that was done by form, forms, right?
Yeah.
So the question at hand is, when they laid those forms and graded it out and leveled it out, who's at fault? Us or the contractor? Because if it was done by the machines they have today to lay valley curb, they're going to, they're going to correct themselves because it's all cheap, yes. But when you're doing it by stick, sticking water, you use it a crude three foot, six foot level, which ends up, the results ever happen. So my, look, I want this done right, and, and I have neighbors that had this done years ago, and they had problems, and they still have water laying in the street as of yesterday, last night. So I just want it done right, but I think there's other people should get some reconsideration too.
When you answer, you said there's water in the street.
More in the valley curb, in the valley curb. They, they get it, they get it just normal, regular expresses.
Right.
And it lays in a particular house, and Linsen was incorrect, but after they got brought this up to the way his council meeting, I was looking at this, and he's always complaining, he's got mosquitoes and everything.
Comment about that, Renee. I had the same question in terms of the fact that we know it's flat here, and so what about the new curbs that have been done and if they did not properly account for the need for the slope, whose accountability is that? And I asked, I asked our city attorney to take a look at that question.
Well, I would say it goes back to your contractor who's not, it goes back to the engineer that's following you. They're not following the plan, and you have to lift it and get drainage, like talking about now, extra asphalt. Yeah. Why would you, like, my whole question is why would you lay something out?
Kyle, whenever some of these streets were done, was it pretty much a rip out the damaged, cracked, problem areas that were aesthetically ugly? And they, they were having problems with the water flowing because of the cracks all in. But whenever they put them back, did they put them back to the same way that they were originally designed? Is that how some of these, these, these areas continue to have problems?
Well, with the existing, just in every stormwater project we've done, yeah, it's got some curbs, it's got broken curb, but when they remove that curb, the idea is to that you got your high point, you got your low point, and to make it as consistent as possible. Throughout, now, a lot of our streets, the streets themselves vary, where they go down, flat out, so they have to even go up. Each side of the crown is different, but as you can see with every valley curb we've installed with different contractors and reset the streets, there's no perfect situation where, where every curb is pulled perfectly. There's a lot of elements that, I was hoping Larry could cover these and kind of show, and contractor too could speak to it, that when they're out there, there's a lot of adjustments that need to be made. And they're forming up these entire streets, measuring it out with string line. I know they have the curb machines now, but I don't know with all the variables if this curb, curb machine could do a good job.
You know, they did all that Bella Island, everything like that, and it was too hard to hold it in, thinking like, my God, and it takes so damn long, and you could wait a lot of footage. And we made it through, we found curvings, I won't name them, but I don't know why they could do it. They probably just didn't have the access to it.
Yeah, it's a day, no contractor has these curb machines that did on our projects.
Other questions?
This particular sheet that shows the profile view of 23rd Street, is that the finished profile view, or was this the profile view that was given to the contractor as to how you wanted it laid?
This is, this is the existing profile view, and, and we're, project's not changing the central line profile.
Right.
And I believe what I wanted to show, I mean, some of the challenges that the contractors and us have had on the project is that it's so flat. And particularly on 23rd, the, some of the numbers here on that, on that, on that profile, you see on the up end of around Gulf Boulevard, the elevations around, ground elevations around 5.8. Down at Bay Shore, it's on five, uh, 4.58.
Right.
That gives us a point 0022 foot per foot slope. That's about 0.268 inches a foot, or it's 2, 2.6 inches every 100 feet. It's very flat.
Right.
So that's, it's a difficult project just because of that.
And where was this taken? Like at the crown of the road, the middle of the road?
That is along the crown of the road.
Okay.
So these are challenges. The, when we say, all right, we lift that one end to make sure that we have a bigger slope, we can only lift that support because we're constrained by Gulf Boulevard and Bay Shore. And so with, with those as our beginning, beginning and ending point, really puts us at a constraint of how much slope we can put into it.
How was the draining of the work, Kyle? Were there any issues on that particular road, main events?
We have video footage before shot on those curbs. You can see stains on the concrete, the water's sad. It was a dry day, and they, but you know, I don't recall specifically that street.
Okay.
Were there also some drainage, drainage issues? Would we check them out and, you know, the pipes? And we had some issues back then.
We've had some backup on Bay Shore that this eventually flows to, but as far as, you know, wood, I don't have the actual profiles that really existed, survey and video to really go up to what it was prior.
So the 23rd Street issue that we have today, so the estimate is approximately $63,000 to do what needs to be done, and if that's done, you're fairly confident that the water's going to go where we want it to go?
Yes.
How thick is the valley curb, the bottom? Six inches. Any way you can reduce that to like, dig it down to about sort of runs, so instead of having six inches at the end, you're only around four, which is going to give you a better, better runoff, but you're digging down?
The things to be careful about, you know, say we can get a deeper end with using a wetter pot. And we're still limited to the goes into an inlet, that elevation.
That's what I'm saying.
And, and that, so we still got that constraint.
So item number three there is really the biggest cost, $35,000. And that's for the driveway paper restoration. How many, how many driveways is that for? That just seems like a lot, a whole lot.
Well, I didn't bring my count on the number. Driveway.
So, so are there mold?
See if I have, but there's mold.
It's half paper, half concrete when I was doing the numbers. Okay, I'm looking in the aerial.
And when we do that, we're just, I'm assuming we're, we're removing the existing pavers and then putting them back?
Yeah. Let's see, my account here, I got about 10 paper drives.
So some of them are around, but it looks like as far as, what, actually, two, I saw half, about five of 10, so about half. The other five are in concrete.
Yeah, it's, but it's almost half and half on 23rd.
But, but that's effectively all labor, right? We're not, we're not buying any additional materials to do that?
Yeah.
Unless the bricks are broken.
Paper is such.
Okay. So if we break it, they were already broken. We're talking about the, the pavers that are in the driveway of the homeowners?
Well, they're already broken and they crumble, and they take them out, and they'll have to get.
Have to buy new ones.
Same amount.
Yeah, okay.
They break the wall.
And matching them, I think, would be a challenge.
It's almost like.
Right, right.
Now, the, the cost that we have in for pavers is for new pavers. So if we use the existing, we end up using the other existing, then we save some money out.
Okay. So would you be comfortable saying that that $63,000 is a conservative estimate?
Yeah.
Any other questions right now? Thank you, Mr. Flutie. I'm going to take comments from the citizens, and then whenever we, if a motion is made and we get into debate, we'll call you back on our idea.
Yeah.
It just happens, it'll be fine. Would any citizens like to comment? Yes, sir. Anyone except for, unless you live on 22nd, you're not allowed to come. No. Come on, sir. Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Is it okay to use this one?
That's fine, as long as I can, as long as he has a mic.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Elian Rosales, and I'm the corner property, southeast corner, Gulf and 23. Right now on the screen, you see what, what we had before, the V-shaped curb, and the water was flowing. Roll the mouse.
You might as well just stay, stay over there.
This is the existing one, no V-shaped curb. The, from the beginning of the driveway towards Gulf, it's a negative pitch, one and a half inch. Water stays there by, by the walkway. This is the last night rain. Some people trying to jump daylight in the water. That's southeast corner of Gulf and 23. That's what we have. V-shaped curb, water flowing down all the way. Curtain was broken in many places, and it was, it was building up there, dirt, so it doesn't, it's an old curb. This is the difference right there where the curb, the new work starts on Gulf and 23, going down towards Bay Shore. So this is the beginning, the negative pitch. That's what you see, the difference. Here it is, the new curb and the existing one, Gulf and 23. Here it is, the new curve and the existing one, Gulf and 23. This is the, the end, uh, Bay Shore and 23. The first 12 feet of the curve has approximately two and a half inch of pitch, 12 feet.
This is not a curate. Mister Flutie, it's not a curate.
There you go, from here. So the engineer said approximately on every hundred feet, we have two and a half inches of pitch to use. But here on top of it, only they use two and a half inch. As the beginning, Bay Shore and 23. Uh, this is how much higher, uh, the, the outside edge of the curve is towards the, the, um, the asphalt. It's about two and a half inch from what it was. And it's consistent, the bottom of the street to the top of the street. That's the bottom, two and a half inch, that's the top of the street by me. So obviously it was by design. So this is, in red, you see the existing, the, um, the curve that was taken out. And in black, on top, you see the existing one. So you see that the V-shaped curve is gone, it's replaced with a flat one, which is two and a half inch higher by the street level of the asphalt. And technically five and a half inch, uh, we lost the, the, the curve, the V-shaped curve. Right by the middle where the water flows. Here's the, the, yeah, the, 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 the last time, the negative pitch. Uh, no pitch, we want to the driveway and after that, the pitch starts. So with all this work proposed, we're gonna do nothing unless negative pitches is removed, which means redo the whole curve. All, all these thousands of dollars will do what? Nothing new. That's what we had last night.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Robert, did you get this gentleman's name and address? Thank you. I'm sure that we'll be discussing this more later in the meeting. Yes, sir. Hi, I'm Pat Murphy. Are you presenting also?
Yes, I am. But I'm gonna start with everything that Nick said.
Okay. And what is your name and address, sir?
Pat Murphy, I'm at 102 23rd Street. Can you guys hear me? Well, that's my wife tells me I generally OD when it's close. Uh, so I, I wanted to question, Mr. Flutie, was that survey that you used, was there a survey done?
I'm sorry, sir. Dear citizen comments, you, you don't inquire our guests, you address the council.
My first question, I guess, is was there a survey done and so when? The reason I ask that question is because today there was a representative from Pinellas. Not sure how he got there, but it was looking at the street as well. Uh, his conclusion was that there's plenty of pitch from the street. He said it was six feet at Gulf Boulevard and then four feet down at Bay Shore and then three at the exit to the, uh, to the intercoastal map. Those round numbers do beg the question of a little bit of rounding there, right? But I, it would be good to compare when the respective surveys were done. The gentleman from Pinellas did not know the date of his. Uh, but he felt pretty strongly that absolutely that the way this was put in is not gonna work and it's probably never gonna work and you need to redo it and build a pitch into it because you do have the elevation differential to make it work. The other conclusion he had was that apparently there was some work that took place toward Gulf Boulevard. Uh, actually, uh, it was, should be under the cognizance of Pinellas. And they were concerned, uh, because he agreed with Nick's point on the pitch there, that it's actually pushing water back out to Gulf Boulevard, which is a problem for them. They prefer not to have. So, uh, again, I think this goes back to the survey a little bit to understand what we're looking at, the reality there. And then, of course, addressing the issue of having that flat valley curve because it's, it's completely negating the benefit of the previous, uh, the previous curve that we had. I've been there for four years and honestly, I never saw any issues with any significant pooling of water. I know it was a little bit stained to, to Kyle's point. But in general, it was very workable. We didn't have any large areas of staining water.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Yes, sir. Please come up, give us your name and address.
John Hensick, 103 22nd. 22nd Street, since we purchased that house back in 2015, those curves in front of our property have been damaged forever and ever and ever, okay? And I know watching water flow, it flows from Gulf from to Bay Shore. There's no crown going both ways. Um, the other issue is, will we residents get notice prior to, if this is approved, the contractor beginning any work? I have irrigation lines within that six inches behind the curve and probably within six inches, I have a fiber optic cable. And if that gets cut, I have no television, I have no internet, no computer. I need to know beforehand. So they cut it, they're gonna have to pay to fix it. I just, all I'm asking is the courtesy of them heads up so that I can locate it for them before they start poking around with their equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Hensick, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Would any other citizens like to comment? Okay, before we go to the council for discussion, I'm gonna need a motion to move forward with this, uh, this proposal. Motion. Motion made by Frank Fank. Do I have a second?
I did.
Second by Mr. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, that's not an actual way that they, sorry, that's not. We did, congratulations. No, no. Um, let's go to debate. Uh, Mr. Fank, do you have a thought?
Um, hopefully, I appreciate all the citizens' comments. Hopefully, before anybody does anything, they, they call, they have the lines located, okay? They, they come out with the stick, those are my voters and the margin of the flags. But my street, yes, they, they didn't rip up anybody's fiber optic. Uh, they didn't rip up a lot of, or, uh, sprinkled it, okay? But they repaired them as they ripped them up. So that's not an issue. My biggest issue is you have pictures of the old curve, which shows a great pitch in it. So the design build plan, did the design build plan have a valley curve in it? Or did it have a flat curve? Because if we screwed up, then we should pay and repair it. But if the contractor put in the wrong curve, he should dig it out. You know what I'm saying?
I will say it definitely looks different, it looks higher.
Well, the whole radius is in there. I mean, and that, what I'm saying is, I understand that you have minimal to work with. But was it designed built with the valley in there or was it not? If it was flat, we screwed up, we said we need to pay.
Well, um, before I go to other council members, what's your, what's your opinion on that particular street on 23rd?
I've let Larry speak on that. I mean, the idea was that we have a valley in the curve. Um, we knew going forward that it wasn't gonna be just flat. Um, but I'd let him comment on surveys at that time here and, um.
Okay. Just for Flutie, would you like to come back up to the podium, please, sir? Would you like to address the concerns on 23rd?
Yes. The, uh, the constraints that we have, we're trying to make sure that the flow line from Gulf makes it down to Bay Shore. And so that brought up the flow line to get enough fall to do that, it brought it up a little higher. And, and in that case, uh, see, I think I got it. But it, it's the, the inverted or the, the flowway is, is not there as, as it should be. But I believe that in talking with the construction folks, if that is because of bringing that up to get it outflow, we kind of got, got that wedge. And to get flow in the curve, that's when the idea of probably bringing in a little extra asphalt to keep it within that curve, then that will get it down. Because if it gets down, uh, I believe it's around maybe 53, now you get, you got the curve in gutter, which is that, that area.
Now, am I looking at the corner of Bay Shore and 23rd in this, in this photo?
Yes.
Gulf, I think.
Gulf, Gulf.
That's Gulf, okay, that's Gulf.
I, I'm gonna get to my, I've got the, I've just gotta get one of the, get that on this computer.
Now, do you may need other citizens?
Please, presentation back.
I just wanna look at photos. Okay, there we go. Let's, uh, get down to. I wanna find some photos of that. This is another view of that photo of 23rd and Gulf.
Okay, and so the curve was raised up to get better flow.
Yeah.
Towards Bay Shore.
Correct.
And now you're, you're thinking that because the asphalt is lower than the curve, it's trapping it?
It, probably. It's about to ask the contractor, come up, kind of explain the, the details that the, with the flow line coming around and the edge of the driveway and, and the asphalt kind of created, instead of in a deeper V, keep that going, the V got a little bit more shallow. Is that right?
Yeah.
I, I could speak a little bit to this whole situation if you don't mind.
What's your name, sir?
Anthony, Harbor Contractor. I'm the president. And I have my former Levi who's on site every day, who's been working through this. Just a couple of issues, or just want to break those concerns or things up to date for you guys. Um, when we were given the project, they bid the project, the only constraint on the project is a note here that says, "Curving to be laid out to where no water does not puddle and to prevent ponding." There's no, grade stakes are not given to us, no grade elevations are given to us. The only thing that's given to us is if the road has a high point in the middle or if the road goes at a consistent flow from one end to the other. So in this situation, on 23rd Street, it flows from Gulf Boulevard to Bay Shore. Now you have two constraints. You have the flow line constraint that has to stay completely the same because you're tying into two points of Gulf Boulevard to Bay Shore. And you have the front board, which has to stay pretty much the same because you're tying into the asphalt because the front board is what gives you the asphalt, which has to tie into that. The existing, the curve that we took out was not, that's not a valley. That curve went flat and then up like that. Kind of like, like a slight, like this.
Right.
What you're trying for us to do is to put in a valley that's, it's not, it's not possible. What really is what you're kind of looking for is more like a road reconstruction project where you go back on all the aprons, you take them all out, you rechange the road profile and everything. So what we're doing here is we're trying to match existing grades, trying to get the flow lines to work. So when we put the front board in and we put the flow line in and they're shaping it with the, with the level to get the flow line to go, as you get from Bay Shore, you'll have a deeper V. And then as you get to Gulf, the V will slowly disappear. As you pointed out on the one street that had like the header curve.
Right.
The reason it's doing, there's no water pounding there is because they, they took the one point and the other point and they drew a straight line and it flows down a straight line. And there's no valley there. So what we're proposing to do in these situations is to put the asphalt an inch and a half, like a half an inch lip in front of the curve to kind of give it like a, like a pseudo V almost, you know, where we're keeping in the curve.
Sort of enhancing the.
Exactly. And we're trying not to go back into the aprons because then you'll, if you have to raise the backboard and raise the front board, then you, on some of the houses, you'll have backflow because the houses sit, don't sit at a higher elevation. So you don't want us going back into the aprons and reconstructing everybody's aprons and everything. So, I mean, we're doing the best we can. As to your note on the curb machine, curb machines are only really used on new construction projects, long parking lots. Because the curb machine has to sit at the same elevation as the new curve. Well, the road's up here and the new curb recording is down here. So you can't use a curb machine. It ha, it's only used on like, we only use it on new roads.
What you're doing here is picturing here, first cone.
Yes.
Is where the, the, um, new, where the milling's starting.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, so from that cone right there, the water.
First cone we see.
The first cone we see is closest to us.
Right.
It goes towards Bay Shore.
Okay.
So that water, there's a straight line that goes from there to Bay Shore.
Okay. So that's where the milling's starting to put the, the blacktop down, right? The first cone?
Yes, that's what we're like.
Why is the curve reconstructed all the way back to the first cone, the first cone?
Well, the plans that we were given to bid actually shows, if you go to the limits of the curve, actually shows it to go into the Pinellas County areas, which we're not, we, we're not doing.
My, here's my problem.
Yes, sir.
What I'm doing by hand.
Yeah.
If you, if you offset, because you have such a low pitch to play with, if you offset that first cone just a little bit, half an inch, and I don't know why you would start there, okay? And then you came down, you lost a lot of your drainage already.
Yeah, so what we did on this one, we started at, we always start at the low point. So we start at the low point and we give it almost, almost level. Barely, the bubble on the, on the level, on a four foot level is almost not even touching the line on this side to get the water to go. It's point 0023% fall from one end. That's percent. So it's like point zero, like Larry, Larry said all the numbers, we're not even repeating, yeah, it's pointless to repeat. So, but, so from that, from the, the cone that's closest to us, coming towards us, the water goes that way. We had to tie into Pinellas County's existing ramp that was right there. That's why there was a huge fall difference in that 12 feet. It's because we started at the low end and we came up with the level pretty much flat, 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 flat as you go. As we're going up on the road, the curve, the V starts to, this, it's going bye-bye. It's turning into a header curve like what he saw on that other road. And it just, it goes bye-bye. And we're two, we're already two and a half inches above the road. Your asphalt quantity on that road is gonna be three times what it should be.
Okay, so the next question in my thing is after you stick the lid, okay?
Yep.
You had to do a level again before you poured the concrete, didn't you?
We, we used the level as we're pouring the concrete, yes. As we're pouring, yes.
What I'm saying is, when you stick the lid, okay? You had to have some kind of an idea, this isn't gonna drain. I mean, no one's gonna, I mean, no one's gonna pour concrete and say, hopefully this works. I, I mean, I, I've been in the construction business all my life, okay?
I understand.
And we don't do things that way.
Yeah. Well, it, it is gonna drain. It's not gonna look like a profile of a valley curve with a valley gutter. His header curve drains, it drains.
Well, we're not talking about his header curve, I'm talking about 23rd.
I understand, but we're, but the problem is, the, I'm, I'm, the problem is, the problem is, the homeowner is saying that it looks too much like the header curve. So we are talking about the profile of the curve. That, that's the main issue here is no one likes the look of the curve, saying that there's no V in it.
No, I don't think the, the main issue is they're getting water in their driveway and it's not draining, right? And you're getting every type of bugging.
Water stains?
Yeah.
That, that whole corner, that whole corner right there holds water, will always hold water. This project won't stop that from happening. It's always gonna hold water. There's nowhere, if you look at the grain shots here, there's nowhere for that water to go on that intersection.
Well, then he shouldn't be doing anything.
Exactly.
But the pictures you showed us before, and we, we're not allowed to cross talk to you guys, but I didn't see any water in the old pictures. And I'm not there, I don't, I don't get out in the north end a lot, I, I never. And I'm not there, I don't, I don't get out in the northern a lot, I never saw after having rainstorm Twenty Third, I never heard of any flooding down there, we had flooded grounds, okay?
Yeah.
But I don't want flooding in our area either, but...
The problem, his existing curb was not, it's not a valley curb, nor, it's not any curb. There's no word there, it's, it's, it's the existing curb, it doesn't follow any profile. What we're trying to do is actually put a correct profile and a V, try to mimic a valley gutter.
I understand, you're marking out your plot, okay? You're gonna say, this is the level, okay, that we have to keep back to make a flow.
Yes.
And...
But the issue is...
They didn't do that.
I, what the issue is, is if we, if we did that, and we, we, which we do, we plot it, we know where the flow line is, it's consistent to one end or the other, then our front board would be four or five inches above the existing asphalt.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, so then we should've said, stop, we can't do this job, rather than do the job and say, look what we did, we did it wrong. And that's, that's what I'm not grasping in my head. I think, I think what you're, what you're saying is, well, if it's not gonna fix stopping the water, then why do it at all? Thank you. That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I don't think everybody one hundred percent agrees with that. I think that, that there, there is a sense of aesthetics that are involved also. And you're, you're going around, you're, you're coming right up there and then you just, you, you stop.
Just tie into whatever's there and that's it.
The entrance of the street and call it a day. Do I think that there's more problems now? Well, right now, probably so, but, possibly. What, what's your level of confidence on raising the asphalt level? And how long realistically do you expect that to last?
You mean raising the asphalt, like adding more thickness to the asphalt?
Correct.
That's, that's done all the time. I mean, Indian Rocks is milling eight inches thick and putting eight inches thick of asphalt. That, that's not, that's not an issue at all.
And so is that...
Which is a cost thing too, you know? We're trying to match the existing asphalt because we're only, we're only milling one inch and putting back an inch and a half. On Twenty Third, we're gonna use, uh, it's gonna be four inches thick in some, in some spots, which is gonna go overage on your asphalt numbers.
And, and so, what's your level of confidence it's gonna help?
The water is consistently running from one end to the other. That's, that's what we were, that's what the notes in the plan say, that's what the spec says, that's what we're doing. It's consistently running from one point to the other. I shot, we shot shots of our, on Twenty Third, I shot every two hundred and ten feet, and we had almost exactly the same fall every two hundred and ten feet. And then we get in front of, at Gulf Boulevard, and we have to dive down and tie into the existing. That's why there's such a, in that twelve feet, that's why there's two inches of fall because we have to match the existing at Gulf. There's nothing we can do about it. That's not, that's a, it's a moot point, I mean. So you can't use that two and a half inches to tell you that you can get fall from there to Bay Shore. That's not how it works.
Right.
So... And I could see on all the other, like, just driving around, it seems like other contractors might've had the same issue that I, that we were having, you know, it's just, there's literally no fall here, nothing. All Indian Rocks, in North Reddington, it's all, it's the same.
That's right.
It's all, it's all the same, you know? So, and we're just trying to, we're trying to get the profile to, to match your valley gutter with the constraints that we're given, matching the existing asphalt, matching the driveway aprons, and keeping a consistent flow line, so...
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have questions?
I understand completely what you're saying, I just wanted to clarify something when Mr. Baker mentioned that it's design build, we did not use a design build. Design build is one firm?
Yeah.
We use a design?
Yeah.
Bid, build, delivery method.
Correct.
Two different firms? Design build, you have one firm, they're responsible for the design.
Not necessary.
Oh, yes, necessary.
No, not, not necessary.
I have my...
If you don't contract with license, one of the highest A, and I'm pretty sure I'm confident in you.
I'm trying to break out of this because they bring in, they bring in subs all the time, and you know that.
Subs? Subs are brought in by...
The general contractor.
This is...
We did not use a design build. As these gentlemen, we use a design build.
The problem, the problem is...
Now, this is, this is not designed.
The problem is, you had plans, okay? Before you do a construction project, you should say, this is gonna work or it's not gonna work. You're showing me the old plan right there, and it looks like they tried to do something and it didn't work.
I'm just trying to tell you, we didn't use a design build.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's costing sixty-five thousand dollars.
Had we used a design build, it wouldn't be having this conversation.
All right, very gentlemanly. It ain't... One at a time, all right? Mr. Baker, you have the floor. What does it matter what it's called? Because it's costing the city sixty-five thousand dollars for something that didn't work, that the contractors thought it would work?
It matters because had we used a design build, there would be one firm, and we wouldn't be sitting here having an engineer talking about whose fault is it, the engineers or the contractors? That's what matters.
Whose fault is it?
I'm not gonna say whose fault it is. I'm just, I just answered your question.
The bottom line is, it, the taxpayers of the city... You know, based upon everything that I've heard, I think that it's somebody else's fault from years ago. Whoever designed the city, the intersections, the way that our streets entered into Gulf Boulevard, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not relevant.
I mean, Gulf Boulevard could've raised their, I'm sure they did, over time, when they were putting different layers, so Gulf Boulevard got higher. So now, everything was gonna be a point there, but we can't make it go that direction.
We don't know the...
Anywhere we are, we're being open.
Yes.
So what do we want to do?
The problem, the bottom line is, did they have water in the street before they did this job? No. Thank you. Okay, do you have water in the street now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, our plan for that contractor did not perform the job the way it's supposed to be. Call it whatever you want. I call it a shit job. Now, I'm not asking you to answer the school. That's what happened.
I do, I do.
I don't care where you have, all right? I don't care if you look at their pastry, it didn't work.
They're not finished.
Point board, both of you. We've got a problem, we need to get it resolved, that's what we're here for. And getting in a pissing match over who's right and who's wrong is not the way to handle this. So I agree that, yep, we have water now where we didn't before. Mr. Reefer, can you confirm that?
I can say that there was always water being held at the sidewalk in that part of the road. We might've made it worse, like we might've tried to come back and fix it, there was... This is what we've been told once, they did realize that there was a, the flow was going in the wrong way from Mr. Nick's driveway to the, to the Gulf Boulevard.
Is the plan, is the plan to pave that street?
So the plan right now, what we're discussing is that, you know, if we're gonna add material to achieve more of a, of a flow line in the center, are we gonna do as is and accomplish water flowing towards Bay Shore by means of the contractors recommending? But either way, there is a negative flow at the west end of Twenty Third that needs to be corrected. We've known about that since the first time we met out there. And that's something we can't correct, so it's not making that county depression any worse. But until the county does something with their road, there's always gonna be water at the very top of Gulf Boulevard, Twenty Third.
Comments? Questions?
If someone could restate what the motion is, I don't think...
The motion is to approve this project plan.
And that, but there's several pieces. What, what, if someone could restate what the project plan actually is?
So currently, we're discussing Twenty Third Street. So we need to come up with what, what we're gonna do, if we're gonna keep the unorthodox curb as is, correct the area that we have a negative flow towards Gulf Boulevard, but use the, the half inch reveal that the contractors are discussing, where we know that the water, you know, the curb looks not like a typical V-shaped curb, the water's still flowing to the west of Bay Shore. Either to the east. Or what Mr. Flutie was recommending is that we could add material to try to achieve more of a center flow line as opposed to it being up against asphalt. Either way, you know, I don't see it improving very much, I think that's the argument, but what we do want is a consistent flow to go to Bay Shore. And I believe, yes, you're correct, there's, the curb may have drained better in some areas, but overall, the curb is not in great shape, there's a lot of cracking, there's depression. And this is part of the project, is restoration of the curb and the resurfacing. So to do so, we're gonna have to have some kind of curb with a lock close, and then we start again.
All right, well, we can't have a motion in the alternative, so we're saying to go with the contractor's proposal and not with the engineer's alternative.
I'd like to hear Mr. Flutie's recommendation for Twenty Third, and what we'll do.
As we're looking here, I just got a thought, at the corner of there, there, and the contractor mentioned that there, at the intersection there, Twenty Third and, and Gulf, there's a stormwater pipe underneath there. There's two inlets on Gulf that connects, and that pipe will go underneath there. There is a possibility, it had to approach Pinellas County. Maybe an inlet can be put in that area to capture water. And that would really solve any water backflowing off on the Gulf and help the situation going down to the Bay Shore.
And that's the best thing that I've heard all night. So what I would like to do is entertain a motion to amend this proposal where we either, we either table it or we amend it and we, we negotiate Twenty Third at a later date. I think we motioned to table this so we can see if we could put spot drains or another type of drain in there without hurting the soil. Do I have a second?
Could you explain that one more time?
Yeah, yeah.
So what you could, so if you look at that picture there, you can kind of see it, around that corner, there's an inlet...
Where that second cone is.
Yeah, around that corner, there's an inlet on that side.
Right.
And then there's an inlet on the other side of Twenty Third. What we could do is put a drainage inlet on that corner, slope from, at the corner house and at the corner of Gulf Boulevard, slope both sides to the drainage inlet and tie it in to the city stormwater system with like a doghouse manhole, and just have a manhole lid in the middle of the, you'd have a manhole lid as opposed to being an inlet, but because you're in, you're tying in a stormwater system to existing, you need to have some sort of structure there.
Correct.
So you have to set two structures. You have to set the inlet structure right here at the corner, and then you have to set another structure, the doghouse structure at the connection point between the, between your system and the county system.
Real quick, what would that cost to build the house?
I, I can't put a number on that, I mean, it's, you got a, you got a low point, you got a, it, it just depends on how deep the pipe is, how big, there's too many factors for me to put a number on anything here at least.
Would you think it'd be cheaper?
My opinion was the water was always there, no matter what's being said right now, no matter everyone, it was always sitting there, there was always water sitting there, there will always be water sitting there. It is not, it's a county right-of-way. It's an unfortunate situation that the homeowners made, it, it, it got, you know, I would want my house, I would want the same thing. So it's unfortunate, but it just, it's the situation we're dealing with at that corner. And the only way to a hundred percent remedy it was to put a drainage inlet in there. That'd be the only way. But then you have to get with the county.
Right.
They have to go over the plans, they have to design it too. They, right, when you're talking maybe a year before we can actually get out there and put the drainage inlet in and, and do that work? But as far as the curb, the drainage project we're currently on, it, it was constructed to have positive flow from his, right in front of the, his house all the way to Bay Shore, which it, which I confirmed at, on our onsite meeting where it does. And unfortunate, it's just an unfortunate situation at that, at that end, it's always held, right, there's a dip right there, you can see, I mean, it's, which is my opinion on it, so...
So are we implying or are we saying that some of our water on Twenty Third Street would be going into the county system? Is that why you mentioned we'd have to get with the county?
Yeah, because you're, you're tying into the county system, the stormwater system there. And they, we just did a stormwater project in Indian Rocks Beach, they, no matter what you do, if, even if you touch their system, you have to get a right-of-way permit. Their engineer has to look at it, they have to look at layer design, they have to sign off on it. It, it turns into this whole, yeah, this whole thing, you know? Which, it'd be nice if we could fix the issue by just curb and moving curb and stuff like that, but it, it just, it's not possible at that corner, which is not gonna happen, so...
I recommend, obviously, if, if we have another solution, I mean, the water's gonna move, from what you referenced earlier, it may not move at the rate...
Exactly.
That, that we would love it to do, but as long as there's some rate, and it's always gonna go the path that we choose this time.
Exactly. If, if the water's bonding for forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours, then yeah, it could be more of a finishing issue.
Right.
But if the water's, is disappearing within twenty-four, twenty, you know, then it's, it's moving, it's going. Go any, and all valley curves hold water for a certain period of time.
What's the distance, how many feet is it from this house?
Five hundred and fifty.
Five hundred and fifty.
And it has a point zero zero two, three fall. That's, that's in tents or whatever, hundreds, thousands. So it's, there's nothing, there's no fall. So, but, but again, what the issue was, is trying to get the valley to consistently go, and when you get to the end, the, the valley's almost gone inside the curb, with us being two and a half inches above the asphalt already.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if you put spot drains in there, would it pose a point?
Yeah, ideally, in the middle of the road, you would put a, you know,...
Well, even in that inlet in the valley curve, if you put spot drains...
Oh, like a, like a channel drain?
Yeah.
Yeah, but then, yeah, I mean, you could do that, but I'm not too crazy about that, I, I don't, yeah.
Well, I guess my, my motion to table, it sounds like it's in for discussion. It doesn't sound like it did. And I'll make a motion again to table. Twenty Third, yeah, Twenty Third.
And when they had the Twenty Second? I'll send it back.
All in favor of table?
Aye.
Okay, it's tabled. Please come back to us with more information. Thank you. I, I appreciate the time that you've been here tonight, and I, I hope we can get this proposal quickly.
So we tabled the Twenty Third Street or the old?
Just the Twenty Third. Now, this is a most convoluted, uh, motion to table, it's not really, wasn't really the right way to handle it, but would someone like to make a motion to approve Twenty Seconds? I approve, we have a motion to approve Twenty Seconds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, you have the floor. Uh, plans are in front of us, but we should go ahead. All in favor?
Aye. I'm sorry, I just wanted to bring up one point, if, just that vertical curve, we can cut it out and replace it, we're looking back at the numbers here, it's pretty significant and it's more of an aesthetic element of the project, and we have a lot of trucks that are constantly driving over it, so how cracked and how cracked and broken is it? It's, I've never looked at it where it was, it was just an eyesore or a danger or hazard. There might be some chips, we have chips in most cul-de-sacs on the B curb, it just did not stand out to me as something that was necessary, and, you know, it's a significant cost as far as vertical. We got the vertical curb, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars, and then the saw cut removal of vertical curves in under Seventeen, there are fifty-five thousand, a big chunk of it. Is that where that function lasted?
Seventeen, the saw cut vertical curb, where is that at?
That is a item on...
See, the item, tell me exactly what that is, that's where you're taking out the...
Carefully, carefully, it's cutting.
Would someone like to make a motion to amend this proposal to where we drop the M can completely?
You mean the M can curb?
Yes.
Because we don't need it?
It doesn't sound like we do.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
All right. Would you like to discuss?
As I understand it, um, the proposal for 22nd Street is presented because it was omitted from initial bid. So we haven't provided for this at all.
Correct.
So the plan is to move forward with 22nd Street, to incorporate that as part of our contract, but deleting the median, because we feel that that's not even necessary. To that, I agree with that.
All in favor to amend the proposal where we remove the median curving or removal and replacement?
I make one more point, that this is the engineer's estimate, so we still would come to a agreement with the contract. A lot of these, um, quantities are, they're in the bid, the original bid. The careful saw cutting and forming of, you know, the valley curve inside of repaved surface, likely something that needs lots of discuss, but, um, as long as we're, I'm all on board, with, within the realm of the estimate, we move forward. I just want to point that out.
Okay, so the motion is to amend this proposal. All right, once again, removing the median curving, uh, and replacement, taking that part out. All in favor? Aye? Okay, now we're back to approving the original motion with the amendment. So that was approving the amendment, now we have to approve the motion, the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
May I? You oppose? Bid, make a record of it, that Mr. Roberts opposes replacing the, or not, replacing the median. Okay, is that it? Any other, uh, any other thing else that you would like to discuss, because we voted on this. Most of these proposals, 23rd, will be revisited, uh, and I'm hoping we can get this resolved quickly. That being said, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, and we'll take a final, a motion adjourned?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.